It's eleven oh one and a half. This is the continuation of the first public hearing of the revised petition of Robert and Donna Weddick and Diane Welsh, n.e. Hayden, the owners of real property situated within the Orchard Valley subdivision in Miami Township relative to the construction of the ditch improvements pursuant to section six one three one point zero four of the Ohio Revised Code. First thing we'll do here is to reconvene the regular session from earlier, from November fifth. But I'd like to welcome you this morning. My name's David Hubel, and this year I am privileged to serve as president of the Board of County Commissioners. On behalf of the commissioners, Robert Proud, Edwin Humphrey here, we welcome you to the continuance of the first public hearing of the revised petition. And if anyone has not already signed in, there's a clipboard, I believe, on your way in. Please do so for the record. In addition, we have a court reporter here, again, present to record the public hearing, so it's necessary for each owner offering evidence to state their name and address for the record, and if you would, do so at the podium, the microphone, so we can get it recorded. All owners who wish to present lay or expert testimony personally or through their chosen representative or experts will be asked to swear or affirm the truthfulness of their testimonies. Any attorneys would not need to be sworn in at this time. If you're affected property owners in the Orchard Valley subdivision, we welcome your testimony either in favor of or against the petition. We do remind you, however, that the statute provides that you may present evidence, comments that are not evidence, are not appropriate at the hearing, nor do they further the position of either side in the interest of everyone's time. If another owner has already expressed what your testimony would be, please consider stating, "I agree with the testimony presented by Mr. Smith," for example, rather than repeating matters that are already in evidence. So with that said, I think the first item, the county engineer, come forward and we request for a written report regarding the specific watershed that goes through the affected pipe.
Thank you, Mr. Hubel. Again, my name is Pat Monger. I'm the climate county engineer. And at the previous hearing, I guess, we had presented the overall drainage situation going on in Orchard Valley relative to the petition. And at that meeting, let's see here, we presented our preliminary report relative to the petition, and that represented the whole subdivision, which represented around 200 lots. And at that time, we also presented an alternate approach of breaking things out on a subsection, if you will, or a sub-area standpoint. Those, that alternate approach, and I think we had three alternate approaches, sub-area one, sub-area two, and sub-area three. And the request of the board was to look at those sub areas, not in terms of platted areas, but in terms of physical, actual drainage area. The petition area in question, let me back up here, involves sections five, six, and seven, I'm sorry, four, five, and six, four, five, and six, but that was, in total, represented some 66 lots. And what the board asked the engineer's office to evaluate is the physical drainage area within that sub-area one, how would the calculation, how would the analysis look, not on a platted section, but the physical drainage area? So we looked at, when you look at the physical drainage area, those sections that were in four, five, and six, that represented 66 lots. If you look at it from a physical drainage area, there's some lots that were platted in those sections physically don't drain through that pipe. They don't through the pipe in question, which is on the, between the Weddick property here, it's where the star is. So what this map delineates is the physical drainage area and how, and as you can see, it cuts across, sometimes it's a partial lot, and sometimes it encompasses the whole lot. But basically, this map here delineates the drainage area and how it's 25, low over 25 acres, and it would impact 64 lots within those sections of Orchard Valley. So then we ran, so having run that analysis, determined, first we determined what the overall acreage was that ran through the pipe, and then we determined what percentage or what fraction of the lot that that represented, and then we continued, you know, the analysis based on that. These next pictures are the same pictures that we showed before. This is the run of pipe. It's about a 200-foot-long run of pipe that needs to be replaced. These are the pictures of the sinkhole. And again, we did the same analysis that we did prior, but we just used the numbers and we divided them by 64 instead of 66. So the drainage area is what it is. It's a little over 25 acres, 64 lots, and each lot that contributes varies from the minimum of an eighth of an acre all the way up to their entire legal lot size.
Can you calculate that based on topo maps?
Correct, correct. Yeah, so if you go back here and look, we've used the contours of the resource that we have, the aerial photography that we have, and we use the contours that would delineate, you know, the topography and which way the ground is, or the lot is, which way that, you know, how the lot drains.
So it's fairly scientific.
Very, as accurate as we can get. We didn't go out and survey this, but the aerial photography is very accurate, and it's down to the foot. So it's, from an engineering standpoint, this is pretty accurate, or as accurate as we can be. So the lots, yeah, sure.
When you were showing the pipe, you said the 200-foot needs to be replaced. Did you mean 200-foot needs to be replaced, or we're talking about repairing the damaged section?
Yeah, the damage, good point. The damaged section, where the star is, there's basically two catch basins, one up near the road, one at the back of the property, and so that run of pipe, if you will, is a little over 200 feet.
So you would repair?
So we would replace that whole run.
That whole 200-foot, not repair the?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That's what our proposal is, to repair, to replace that entire run of pipe.
Okay.
Again, those are the pictures. If we look at the, again, this is the, you know, we're using the same estimates that were prepared before, and if this moves forward, we obviously get, you know, detailed costs from, either estimates from, one would be from my operation, and the other, you know, couple probably would be from contractors. But our estimated cost to repair that system through there is lower than $43,000, so that number remains the same for discussion purposes. That would be divided, you know, by the percentage of lot that the homeowner would have, again, all the way from an eighth of an acre all the way up to their full lot, if you will. Again, we would have an ongoing maintenance cost that we would have to, again, these are estimates. So after the capital expense of the $43,500 or whatever it ends up being, was probably lower than that, but no more than that, then that, once that capital cost was recovered, then the ongoing maintenance costs would still be there. So this assessment would be in perpetuity, you know, on the lots, on those 64 lots.
The maintenance, the maintenance.
The maintenance would be, right, right. So again, the costs vary per lot, because we're doing it, instead of doing it on a uniform per lot basis, the board asked me to look at it from an actual drainage perspective, you know, how much physical drainage, how much of your lot physically drains, ultimately drains through this pipe. So it varies from $28 all the way up to 125 per lot, per year. And then again, those, that would be the whole, that would incorporate the capital cost as well as the maintenance cost for the first 10 years, and then after the capital cost was recouped, those numbers would go down to basically $4 on the low end, all the way up to $17 and a half dollars from a maintenance ongoing standpoint. So again, I wanted to point out the fact that we would have, you know, capital costs for an estimated 10-year period of time, and then ongoing maintenance costs. So really, the only, the fundamental difference is instead of it being, you know, the $43,000 plus the maintenance costs divided by 66 under the previous analysis of sub-area one, we obviously did it where you paid a fraction or a proportionate share based on your lot and how much of your lot drained through the pipe.
Basically acreage?
Acreage, right.
Or portion of acreage.
Right. Instead of dividing it just by 66, we divided it by acreage, area. And that is the update or supplemental report that the board asked me to prepare, and if there's any questions.
Did you go through the, I didn't see that you, I saw in my report, but I didn't hear you go through what the cost would be to the various homeowners?
Yes, it varies from, let's see here, I believe, the, from a total, from a capital and maintenance cost, it would, the low would be $28.66. That's for the property owners that have that eighth of an acre. And then it would vary from there, go all the way up to $125.64 per lot, per year for that 10-year period of time. Once the capital cost was recouped, then those maintenance costs would, or that, the assessment would drop down to $3.97 on the low end to $17.41 on the high end. Now, those are numbers directly proportionate to the cost of $43,500. Should that number drop to 30 or 40 or whatever the number is, then obviously the proportionate shares would drop as well.
The $43,500, is that a number that it would cost the county engineer's office to do it, or would that be an estimate based on what a third party?
That's an estimate of what a third party, we've, you know, we've used, you know, we've, it's a little hard, because most of our jobs, from a cost estimate standpoint, they include things like replacing pipes, but it also includes other things like asphalt, and, you know, so the jobs are a lot bigger, and so sometimes those costs proportionally might get distributed a little different. So this is our best guesstimate at the moment of what a relatively, I mean, compared to a multimillion-dollar job, this is a relatively small job. But from a homeowner's perspective, this is a pretty large job. So this is our best guesstimate of what a third-party contractor would charge to come in and do this specific, you know, project. You know, we have not cost, we have not estimated cost, or, you know, estimated it out from an engineer's office of what it would take our crews, you know, to go in and to do this work. But should this move forward, that would be the first thing we would do. It's certainly, we would look at it as, we would sort of put together a bid or an estimate of cost, and then we would get with a couple contractors that are, you know, appropriate, that would do this level of work, this size of job, and have them cost it out as well, and whichever one was more economical, that's the way we'd go, or propose to go.
I'm wondering why we, I'm not an engineer, nor do I do construction, but why would we replace the whole 200 feet as opposed to repairing the break, maybe the section either side of?
We looked at that, and based on some of the work that we've seen, or some of the evidence that we've seen, the risk is that in order to make the repairs complete today, a fair amount of the costs that you see with contract, this kind of work, is mobilization set up and just physically coming in and digging, you know, the material cost is, it's a percentage of the job, but it's a relatively small percentage of the job. So based on, you know, the evidence that we've seen in the video, it makes the most sense, it'd be most economical to do the whole run at today versus risking, you know, going in, making a repair, and then maybe in a year from now, we have to come back in and fix another section that might go bad or that did go bad, sort of a piecemeal effect.
Question here?
My name is Shay Horns, and I live on Wild Cherry. And my question is, is up until now, it's been assumed that our maintenance expense has been covered by the county, correct? And I guess what I don't understand is why there would be a maintenance expense when there's already a capital expense, and the maintenance expense is tacked onto our property in perpetuity. So that's what I don't understand, is up until now, we haven't had a maintenance expense, even though we've had lines on private property. And I was hoping that you could clarify that point.
I can, it's part of the ditch petition process and the proposal from the county engineer to establish maintenance of that pipe as opposed, so that it can be maintained into the future. So that's part of the ditch petition as the county engineer's recommending. Is, I don't mean to speak for you, Pat, so.
No, I think, and I'm not exact, you know, and maybe this will help, and if not, I'll, we can certainly, you know, continue on. But in the before, there had, in the before, so two years ago, five years ago, whatever, there was a, the county's position and the board's position is that there is a clear line of distinction between public and private. And so anything on the public side of the equation, maintenance, repair, whatever, then that is government responsibility.
That's in the right-ofway.
Anything in the right-ofway would be, in this particular case, township responsibility. Anything outside of the right-ofway would be private property. So you're right, in the before, you weren't paying a maintenance, because it was an individual-based It depends on where the pipe was, and that's really why we're here, is that, you know, the petitioners don't feel that it's, I don't want to speak for the petitioners, but the sense that I've gotten from talking with Bob and the board and everything is that the petitioners don't feel that that should be their sole responsibility, and so this section of the code provides a remedy that would distribute that responsibility over a broader spectrum. So you're right, in the before, you had no responsibility for maintenance unless the pipe was on your property. So that's the whole reason why we're here, is if this ditch petition goes forward, my only point is, is that I just want to make it known that there would be an immediate capital expense, but an ongoing, because once we bring this into public responsibility, you know, and again, the maintenance costs, they are estimates. It's not, you know, it would be something that we would, you know, if a little problem pops up, we would then have the money to go out and deal with it so it doesn't become a big problem. And so the maintenance costs, fair enough, are estimates, but if this petition goes through, then it's important for everybody to understand that you would have a capital upfront, you know, expenditure, and then an ongoing, in perpetuity, of maintenance. And the maintenance thing is really hard for me to put my hands around, because it's in the future. The best thing that I can tell you is that we've televised all of the lines in the subdivision that are outside the right-ofway, because everything inside the right-ofway would be township responsibility. So we've televised all the lines outside of the right-ofway. We found a few problems, but it's not, it's not a complete disaster, I guess.
President? And an ongoing question? Sure, okay. Sir, I'm just curious, the ongoing maintenance expense, just the actual maintenance itself, would that help identify future problems before they became a collapse, and therefore you would have the possibility that you would have these major capital expenses, because issues would be identified sooner before they became a large sinkhole?
Yes, yes.
Is that fair to say?
Fair to say, yep.
Yes, sir.
It's Milo Marshall on 1573 Orchard Valley, and I just wanted to check, are we still part of this, we're not in the watershed?
What the board asked me to do was to take the area, again, the petition as presented, impacted, I guess, or affected, whatever word you want to use, applied, I guess, the petition as applied, affected the entire subdivision. And so what the board asked me to do was to look at this specific sub-area number one, which was where the bulk of the capital expense would need to occur, and look at that. So if you live within this boundary, if you're one of these 64 lots, and we-
I'm on Orchard Valley, which I don't think you've seen.
So the answer to your question is, we haven't made a decision-
Right.
-about whether to use the full piece, this piece, any piece, deny it. We haven't made any decision whatsoever, so it's in-
I do have a list.
It's a difference between one proposal versus another proposal, none of which have been decided.
Decided.
Mr. Monger, thank you for your response to the question that was presented in the last meeting. Thank you. If anyone is prepared to have testimony today, either for or against this ditch petition that hadn't been sworn in last time, the last public hearing, if you would stand, and I think Marshall McCracken will swear you in.
If you were sworn in the last time, you're still on the road today, if you have new evidence to present. Is there anyone else who will speak, other than attorneys who needs to be sworn in? Thank you.
Okay. Well, then we will take any additional proponent testimony, those who are for the ditch petition. We'll open it up.
All right, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Fezner. And again, Michael Mann on behalf of the petitioners, and I want to thank the commissioners again for all the time and effort that they've put into this, and certainly to the engineer's office as well, and for providing us with this supplemental report. The evidence that has been presented, I submit, certainly supports the petition and meets the statutory requirements of the ditch petition process. I think the issue really becomes whether we look at the short term or in fixing just the initial problem on the Weddick and Welch's property, or if we look to the long term, including the long-term maintenance to try to prevent some of these throughout the whole subdivision. Just stepping real quickly through what is required under the petition process, the cost, obviously we have multiple estimates about how this can be done, depending on which areas and sections of the subdivision are combined, put together, but just using the final numbers that Mr. Monger presented, you're looking at a range of roughly $28 to $125, certainly very doable. And to the commissioners, we provided a packet through Mr. McCracken that also gave some, just breaking down some of the different possibilities, if you look at sections four, five, six, and seven together, or the whole subdivision, or various machinations of that. So, and the preliminary report had already answered the question of whether it's feasible, and the answer is yes. And did the cost, do the benefits outweigh the cost? Mr. Monger, in his preliminary report, it stated it can be concluded that the benefits exceed the estimated cost to repair. I haven't heard anything to suggest that's any different, so. So the opposition, just kind of summarizing what was presented at the last hearing, I think generally is from section three, primarily Hickory Thicket, Plum Run, and Mount Zion, those roads, and I think it's fair to say that they would argue they don't share the same watershed, certainly is demonstrated by this drainage area here as well, and that their pipes are of better construction. Almost everyone, the last time, who was opposed, did say that they agree that the problem should be fixed, and many suggested the county could pay for it. I would suggest that the way the county pays for that is through the ditch petition process. Looking at the short terms, so the question just becomes, do you fix the collapse itself and then wait for, you know, kind of do this on a piecemeal, ad hoc basis, and then go through the same process every time there's another problem that arises? I believe in the preliminary report, there is another problem outside of this drainage area in section four that still would need to be addressed as well, so that, this doesn't cover that. Seems that at a minimum, sections four, five, six, and seven, all would need to be included in this to fix the currently existing problems. Where I think the bigger issue, question really for the commissioners is whether you look at the long-term benefits here. I mean, the report, the preliminary report said that Orchard Valley was designed as a whole. Almost 43% of the pipe is outside of the public right-ofway. It's almost half. Seems like a more efficient use of resources, manpower, dollars, to include the whole subdivision as the petition was originally, as the request was originally made in the petition. Just again, submit that the evidence as presented so far does support the petition as was submitted, and we would pray that the commissioners consider that and approve it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Is there any other proponent testimony for the petition?
My name's Roger Weddick, I'm one of the petitioners, and I submitted testimony the last time I was here, so that's a matter of record. But again, I'll just speak to, you know, the report that the county engineer put together, and just cite several facts of that report. One of the statements in the report, in the engineer's report, which is online, it says, You know, the facts that were in the report, number one, it says Orchard Valley subdivision was designed as a whole, but developed and recorded in seven sections. And that was part of our original submittal when we put in. You know, you, who was involved with the subdivision was that you had, the developer developed it, he designed and engineered such a subdivision, he engaged several engineering firms. Bayer Becker did the layout of the subdivision's stormsoars. McGill and Smith did the overall engineering, and then you had C.G. Hartman that worked with Bayer Becker to lay out all the stormswor. So from day one, this was a whole plan, the stormsoars were planned for the entire subdivision. And Mr. Manger rightly states that basically it was laid out in whole, but the subdivision was developed in the sections. So clearly, what was put in place at Orchard Valley subdivision was to integrate a stormswor system for the entire subdivision. Now, you know, so now, again, what you have is 9,800 feet of stormsoars, both what you refer as private and public, which is on the railways. both what you refer as private and public, which is on the right-ways. So, you know, forty-three percent of that is on right-aways, which was purposely put on lot owners', lot owners' property. And what I find most objectionable was, is that there was never an assignment for that. Your subdivision rules and regulations state that any easement, our property should spell out the terms and conditions. Well, there is no terms and conditions spelled out on those easements. And then, you know, my understanding of plat law is that if there is an assignment, then it either should be put on the plat or put on another document that is referenced. So none of that. So, what you have is that storm squares were put on private law owners' property without their knowledge. The second point that I would like to report is that the report states that while the amount of stormwater runoff generated may vary per lot, it could be stated that each lot benefits from the storm square system. And we stated that in our original report, because it is a drain, because it is a design of the drain system in conjunction with a grading and development plan that allowed each of the lots within the subdivision to be graded. You know, we're in total agreement with that. And I'll just conclude with the summary that's cited in the statute. Basically, the Ohio Advisory Code says that, in the first hearing, that a preliminary cost estimate is provided. Mr. Manger provided that. In fact, he provided five cost scenarios, plus three alternates, which include the section three and seven. The second requirement of the code is that comment on the feasibility of the project. Clearly, the project is feasible from a cost and constructability standpoint. A statement whether benefits outweigh the cost estimate. Clearly, the benefits outweigh the cost in terms of property values and future potential damage to homes and infrastructure. Fourth, list all factors both favorable and unfavorable. Nothing unfavorable was reported. And then, two alternates, obviously included alternate. So, bottom line is that all the requirements of the Ohio Advisory Code sixty-one thirty-one has been met. Now, having satisfied all the requirements, and which is all detailed in the county report, we pray for granting a relief. A granting a relief, yeah. A granting a relief of anything less than full participation of the entire subdivision continues the contentious rank war between subdivision residents now and in the future. Leaving a problem as is or only partially resolved is destructive to all residents of Miami Township and Claremont County. Now, again, I'm very sorry that, basically, you know, we've created this dissension, but bottom line is that you have a subdivision that's over twenty, twenty-five years old. Okay, problems are going to develop. Right now, the problem's in our section, but other problems is gonna, you know, gonna happen elsewhere. So, if we take care of our problem and another problem developed in another subdivision, does anybody, does anybody else want to go through what we've been through for a year and a half? You know, it just, to me, it's just totally nonsense. Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Weddick, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponent testimony for the ditch petition?
Is this an appropriate time for comments, for proponents, or not?
Not yet, no.
The purpose of our hearing is to hear testimony, so-
Evidence.
Evidence.
All right. There is no other testimony on behalf of the ditch petition. We'll entertain any opponent testimony, those against the ditch petition. If you would, please stand up, state your name. If you could come to the podium, we can get you on the microphone then.
My name is Gary Charleville, I'm at Orchard Valley Drive, fifteen fifty. I just got a question. I believe the last time we had a meeting here in the evening, by the testimony given in the picture shown, improper techniques like no pea gravel or things like that were used for bedding for the problem area we've got right now. So that tells me that maybe whoever inspected it dropped the ball on it, and maybe it's township's responsibility, or county's, I don't know how it works, but it seems to me if you've got that going on in that one area where the problem is, you've probably got it going on through the whole entire area. And if that's not the way it's supposed to work, I don't understand why anybody here should be responsible for it. You know, if somebody dropped the ball on the inspection, I mean, what the hell, what are we even here for? That's all I got to say.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Charleville. Any other testimony against petition?
My name is John Warner, I live at fifty-five ninety, five on court. That is section three or sub-area three, depending on which way you're looking at it. But I did speak last time, sworn in there, but there is some additional information, of course, with the revision of the county engineer's report. And I do agree that the problem needs to be fixed, but the map we had up earlier that shows the sixty-six properties, frankly, following the watershed is what engineer, the engineer that we had, Arthur Bray, last time, and our lawyer said was appropriate to do. And I thank you particularly, and the board at large, for taking that look at it, because that is the alternative we feel should be followed. Okay? We did not say, there were some that did say the county should pay for it, but they said there was no testimony last time saying that this wasn't the right approach, couldn't disagree more. Okay? We should, if we need to, if it needs to be done separately, it needs to be done by watershed. So if section three, sub-area three, needs it, we can file our own petition. They're worried about we have to go through the process they went through. I don't think that could be further from the truth. The fact is, that once this is done, there will be a precedent. The board will have an approach, if they do it by watershed, the next time it'll be a matter of, you guess what? With this particular watershed, whatever it is, which by the way, has been nicely documented by Mr. Monger and the engineering crew, we have it. You don't have to go through all of that, we know exactly which houses to include, because we have the watersheds documented. You wouldn't even need an attorney to do this. You could just simply say, using the report from the county engineer, here's the watershed, here's where the damage is, and we could go that route and follow watershed, which is the precedent set by other locations in the state. Somebody drawing arbitrary lines called a subdivision back in nineteen seventy-six has nothing to do with this. Okay? If you want to make the argument that it is the township, the whole township, or it's all of the Claremont County, then the approach should be taken at that level, not at the subdivision level. Stopping at subdivision makes no sense, because there are other people, other properties outside those subdivision lines, and pardon me, Bill, if you're here, but that farmland right here drains into the same creek. It's surrounded on three sides, for goodness sake, why wouldn't it be included? If you're following watersheds. Similarly, the people that are crossed on the other side of Mount Zion Road, there are properties over there that likewise drain right into that same creek. So stopping at the subdivision makes no sense. It's capricious and arbitrary. Watershed is the thing to follow. Okay? And they say it would be destructive to the entire township in Claremont County? I don't think so. Because I've lived there, you know, for almost thirty years now, and we have, there was no subdivision back there. Sections four, five, six, and seven didn't even exist. If that water line plugged up, the water would run back off into the creek, and we would not be bothered in the least. Okay, we weren't before, we wouldn't be this time. Likewise, the damaged areas that are in the pipe, that are in sub-area three, if those plugged up, if you take a look at the topographical maps, if they plugged up, they would run over the surface. They're not going to be some seventeen-foot diameter, eleven-foot-deep hole, because the pipes simply aren't that deep there. And if it's on private property, it seems to me that the first option should be to those private property owners to fix it themselves, rather than be subjected to a larger. So, you know, thanks for the help, but don't help me anymore. Okay? I don't need the help. All right? All right? Please don't ask him to help me anymore, or have him help me. Let me take care of my own business, and let him take care of his business.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Any other testimony against the petition?
Yes, my name's Myla Marshall, I'm at fifteen seventy-three Orchard Valley, and I just wanted to bring up some of the items in the petition. They talk about beneficial parties. I think it shows by the watershed that the engineering office did, that I live in section two, and we are not, we do not benefit from any of this construction or that. So, we don't benefit from this work. We don't benefit from this action. Our systems are different. I have an open ditch out in front of my house, I don't have a pipe, so, and it doesn't connect to this whole system. So, based on that, I think it doesn't apply to this application of the ditch petition. We're not a beneficial party. So, like I said before, I'd like to be removed from this ditch petition as a non-beneficial party. And it shows by the watershed map that we don't benefit at all from this operation in section two. So, that's all I'd like to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Marshall?
My name is Tony Dobrowolski. I am, I live at sixteen seventy-four Hickory Thicket Drive, and I'm in phase three, section three. I think one of the things that has come from this is that this is the first time, I believe, based on the last hearing, that the county has actually had one of these petitions filed. I have actually learned a lot through this process. I have immersed myself in ditch petition, this particular version of it, because there's other versions, to the point where I know more now than I ever wanted to know. So, I have some comments. John brought some good comments up, so I won't try to duplicate any of them. I don't know that there's dissension within the subdivision. I'm certainly not going to sit here and say that the ditch petition for the people in that watershed where that pipe is compromised should not have the ability to do the ditch petition process and get that fixed. I'm not going to say that they shouldn't have that right. That certainly is their decision, and if there's homeowners here within that watershed, then they can certainly speak to what they desire. But what I do really want to emphasize here is the sections one through three, because those are sections that were built. Every one of these sections was built independent of each other. The drainage for section one, two, and three is fair.
It's a touchscreen.
Yeah. Can someone flip it back? So I will want to get to that screen, but if someone could flip it back-
No range. Pat, does it work with that way to move it? Can you move forward and back by swiping?
Is it just, just hit this down key? Okay, got it, there you go. So, section, some of these sections in the back do have interconnecting pipes, because I want to clarify that the subdivision is not one interconnected stormwater drainage system as some of the evidence that's been presented. It clearly is not. You know, there's definitely interconnection, but in a lot of cases, it's a bissection. There is, in the back portion, some that are interconnected, and we can see that, but it's not applicable to every single section. The other thing I'll point out is that not only did John mention this property, and then we have properties over here that drain into our subdivision, but we also have drainage coming from the subdivision over here that comes under dry run into section one and two. So, by moving outside of the watershed, you are really muddying the water by just saying Orchard Valley subdivision. Because now it wants to say that the homeowners over in this subdivision, the homeowners over on this side of Mount Zion and that farm should not also be incorporated. I'm not asking you to do that by any means, but I'm saying that if you go with the whole subdivision, you're just opening up a whole other can of worms for people saying, well, it should even go further than that thing. And I don't know if that's really going to accomplish what it is everybody's trying to do. And in your decision process, it kind of becomes difficult. So, it is, it was built as outlined here, over the course of thirty years, so you have to realize that obviously not everything's interconnected, because then obviously where would all that water have gone over the course of thirty years? Because there would be pipes that hadn't been built already. So there is independence there. Because of the fact that it was built over that many a number of years, there was different standards for, I guess, of construction. I don't know if plastic drain pipe wasn't around in nineteen seventy-two, but in section one, two, and three, we all have reinforced concrete. So, the one thing I've learned from this is that reinforced concrete is a lot more durable when it comes to maybe some installations that may not be a hundred percent correct. Just by the nature of concrete, I would say that if there was some erosion around the pipe, that is probably less likely to collapse than a plastic pipe would. Anyone could probably assume that. So I would argue that we're not at the same risk as the back, which has primarily plastic drains. We have all reinforced concrete, so our risk is less. Most drainage systems, from what I understand, are built and designed to last fifty to a hundred years. Sections one through three have been around for over twenty, we have no known issues. We do have a couple of cutouts, I think, in section three, where it looks like a builder may have taken a pipe that either drains a sump pump or gutters from a house and popped it into the main drain that the engineer called out, but he only states in his report that those need to be monitored, that there's no immediate need to repair those, and they've been there for twenty years with no issue. So, I'm really asking you to look at the issues from what the state law guides you on, as well as looking at it from prior court decisions, as well as precedents. It all talks about watershed. You know, Art was up here, and he talked about watersheds. There really isn't a lot of case law that says, oh, we'll just do a whole subdivision. So, I think that we're really opening a can of worms if we do the subdivision as a whole. I think what we should look at is the watersheds, and the engineer did a great job of outlining the watershed area that's impacted. I would also remind you that there was a ton of homeowners from sections one through three at the last hearing, and not one of them was in favor of the petition as it is currently stated. And for obvious reasons. We don't have any immediate need, sections one and two didn't even have anything to be monitored, and our pipes are superior. You know, I guess we lucked out. So, just give me a second here. So, basically, you have three decisions. You can either approve the petition as it is, you can deny it outright, or you can vote to amend it. And I'm not going to tell you that amending it or denying it, whichever one you think is the right decision, that would lie with you. But I would personally say, and I'm speaking for all the homeowners in phases one through three, that we are not in favor of you approving the petition as it's currently written. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Dobrowolski, thank you. Any other testimony against?
My name is Regina Theoman, I'm the property owner, and I live at fifty-five ninety-two Plum Run. I'm in section three. In an effort to save time, I will totally support what both John Warner and Tony Dobrowolski said, and we do not have any water going into their pipes, therefore, we have no benefit in this, and I totally am against the petition as it's written. Thank you.
Any others?
My name is Paul Barkum, I live at sixteen seventy Hickory Thicket. And a couple of things I wanted to just cross back over, I want to revisit the engineers'. First, I want to say this. What I really detest about this process is the divisions. It gives new meaning to the word subdivision, and I really don't like that. I think that we're neighbors, I wish that, and I want there to be a better way to handle this. I think that the county engineer danced a- I think that the, the county engineer danced around the, the subject when it, when it came to your questions, sir, about replacing the whole 200 feet of, of drainage. And it goes back to what another gentleman mentioned, which is the damage was caused by provable negligence in the, in the installation. And, and as that being the fact, let me go back to something that happened when I had to repair my own drain in my backyard. Because I went down to the zoning office, and I got what this gentleman got. The zoning map with a, you know, everything laid out, and it, and it clearly states that in, on your property, any drainage that's, that's buried, there's your responsibility. I, I had to make a choice. I had the ground collapsing in my own backyard. I had two, two, two other neighbors joining that property who weren't interested in, in doing anything about it, and a lot of other water coming through there. I decided, because I had the opportunity, to fix it. And, and it wasn't easy. I, I incurred injuries on just doing that myself. I, I busted my leg open when it slipped off a shovel, and it was a dirty wound. It took a year to heal. So, and there's other things, too, that I won't go into. But for the, for the county, th- this is what I disagree with on, on the premise, on this face. For the county to ask for recuperation of, of monies for this repair, I believe it's wrong. I've always believed that. I felt like there should have been an option for myself when I had to make that repair, but I just went with what, what I was given, the laws that were in place. So now, what I see is the county's trying, and I think the county's trying to change the laws to favor their, the county. And, and it's creating this, it is creating division here.
Wait, could I just comment a little bit? This petition wasn't brought forward by the Board of County Commissioners, so.
You're correct.
So we, we didn't do anything except follow the law to accept the petition.
Yes, sir. And let me, let me strike that statement, and let me then move to the final thing, because I kind of veered off track there. What I actually wanted to say there was, I understand the county hasn't made their decisions yet. So, my point in being up here today is to, is to push for the county to consider to bring this community back together, to cover the cost of that, of that repair. And, and furthermore, I don't think that, personally, if, if this had started off as a petition for the whole subdivision, whether it be by drainage, drainage areas, or by the, the whole subdivision, for just a drainage tax at $4 a lot or less, I don't think, I, I can't imagine anybody would have necessarily disagreed with it. But to bury that cost, that repair in there, that's the kill, that's the killer. These people here are sitting here thinking, "Now if I don't get the rest of the subdivision into this, my cost is doubled per year, 150 bucks for some people, on top of all the taxes and so forth." That's not fair to these people. I, you know, I'm on the other side of the aisle, but I see the unfairness here. Because I myself, I, I am into this for over $3,000 myself on my own repairs. And so, you know, I, I'm pleading the case of, you know, that the county would, would manage this repair. Whatever happens with the, with the petition, you, you may well pass a petition without the cost of those repairs included. That would be much more favorable to, to the people who want to be in it. But as it stands today, I, I do not, sir. Thank you.
Any others?
I'm Bill Thomas, 1680 Hickory Thicket. I want to say I support everything Tony and John have stated. You know, we are not a part of this drainage. I have talked to the township trustees. I've, you know, to try to figure out why these folks have just been shoved to the side, and it's, again, private property, not our responsibility. The same spiel that, that they typically give. The problem that we all face here is this isn't an isolated incident. This is going on throughout the state. It's going on throughout the county. So you folks are challenged with quite a, a struggle, because the tax money you take in is budgeted, and I understand you don't just have this money laying around to say, "Well, the county can absorb it." You know, you have budget overrun you have to deal with, and I get it. But what you do have at your disposal is a prosecutor's office. What you do have at your disposal are folks that do, can do the work at a lesser cost than if these folks go out and pay for a contractor on their own. What I encourage the commissioners to do is to do what's right and, and do this by watershed, but not just throw this to the side and get the prosecutor's office involved and somehow go after the folks. And these people that build these subdivisions, they're making money. They, they come in, they do things, they don't do it properly, they walk away, and then they live off what they make. I'm not sure if this company's in business any longer or not, but i- it's a shame that they come in, they don't put the gravel in, and allow the, the plastic to expand and contract as it should, and then you have these breaks and these cracks. And then they sit scot-free, and then now we're all here dealing with it, and now the, the county's wasting a bunch of resources and money and time. His time is, is taxpayer dollars, your time is taxpayer dollars, and we're, any way we look at it, we're wasting time and money. We need to do what's right. My opinion is to go after the people that, that caused this in the beginning, because the township certainly isn't. But in the meantime, as John and Tony, as, as representative of our, our, our sections, we just are not benefiting properties, and I just don't see fit that we can just freely start billing people for work that was after the fact that our property was built. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Any others? Yes, sir.
I'm John Kington. I live at 1566 Orchard Valley Drive. I support what Mr. Warner and Mr. Dobrowski have said. I, Mr. Monger had put up a slide that had subdivided this area into three sections, I think more or less according to watershed and where he found an issue. I was wondering if I could ask a question about that.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Monger, I noticed that when you subdivided that into three, that, first of all, I should say I'm in Section 2. That Section 2 and Section 1 were not in any of those subareas. Did you, is there a water storm up in either of those sections? And if so, did you inspect those?
Yes, there is. That would have been, you're talking about in Sections?
Section 2?
Yeah.
Section 1?
Okay. Yeah, Section 1 and Section 2, they do have, they do have a closed system. You can see here in the blue. The reason why those weren't part of the subarea proposals is because after we televised those lines, there was no apparent need for improvement, you know, inner damage, and there were no, there was no, no problems, and there was nothing to monitor. So those, so there was really no proposal to make, because, again, part of the reason to give alternate approaches is inherently, you know, to give alternate approaches. So there was, there was really nothing that was, that was part of. If, if it, if the petition goes as the whole subdivision, then Sections 1 and 2 are in. If you break it up on an as-needed basis, so to speak, into those subareas, there was, there was no immediate problem to deal with in Sections 1 and 2.
Follow-up, if I may. Are the storm drains in those sections, are those private, or are they in the public right-of-way?
There are, sex, there are. It's a little bit of both. There, there's some, I don't know those numbers off the top of my head, but graphically here looking at this map, it looks like it's about, it's about half and half. So about, I don't know what the total feet is, but it looks like about half of the, the underground pipes are on private property, and about half of the underground pipes are along the roads.
Okay. Thank you.
We're actually going to limit this to testimony and comment. We'll have a discussion period briefly after this, but right now we're just going to limit it to testimony. So is there anyone else that's here to testify against the petition? Okay, I'd also like to acknowledge for the record of additional correspondence that we've received after the October 1st meeting relative to the subject petition for the construction of the ditch improvements pursuant to Section 6131.04 of the Ohio Revised Code. Ms. Casica, you've received other letters and things in?
Innumerable, yes. And they haven't got a count on them, but they will all be included in the, in the transcript. As the first 32 were prior to.
Okay. Then maybe we can have a discussion or deliberation? Mr. Humphrey, that you had some comments you'd like to make?
First of all, I think this is all new to us, too. This is the first ditch petition that's come before the board. So it's a difficult thing, and we've invested a lot of time, energy, in trying to understand what our responsibilities and, and are, and how, how we should proceed. Truly by myself, I thought long and hard about it. I, it is not an easy deliberation. It is not an easy choice. I believe that probably the choice is between the last presentation for Mr. Monger, which is a watershed, and not approving the ditch petition. I think those are the two choices in my mind. I've read all the letters. I've read the, reread the transcript from the first meeting, and, and I've tried to noodle those through to, to do my best as, as one of your commissioners. We began the public hearing on the ditch petition on Orchard Valley last October the 1st, and it was continued in progress until today, and I've lost my glasses to do it there. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear testimony to help us make a decision to grant, modify, or dismiss the ditch petition. The criteria that was stated a couple of times are that the proposed undertaking of the maintenance, improvement, and repair is necessary for the disposal and removal of surplus water. The second is that the purpose undertaking of the maintenance, improvement, and repair will be conducive to the public welfare. And the third is that the board is reasonably certain that the cost of the proposed undertaking of maintenance, improvement, and repair will be less than the benefited, will be less than the benefits conferred by such undertaking. So the, the repair is less than the benefit. Facts were presented to help us determine these criteria. There was significant testimony that was outside the scope of these criteria that I've mentioned. The comments were permitted and are in the public record. We did not respond to those comments, because our response would not be relevant to the three cri- criteria. But I'm afraid as a result of that, people are convinced that those comments were true and that we sat with our tail between our legs with, and accepted those comments, because we were wrong and we had no defense. I want to set the record straight. The county did nothing wrong. Our comment, one comment that was repeated several times, was the building inspection department did not do their job in inspect, in inspecting the pipes when they were installed. First of all, the building department does not do the inspections. The developer of the subdivision hires a professional engineer to inspect the stormwater lines as they are installed, and a report of those inspection is filed with our building department. The building department relies on the representations of the professional engineer that the installation was done properly. Second, shoddy workmanship was alleged, because when you look in the hole, the only thing you see is clay and some construction debris. Frankly, from looking in the hole, you can't tell whether it was put in properly or not put in properly. The building, I've, if it was installed properly, the first product to go through the pipe, go through the hole in the pipe would be the sand and gravel that was around the pipe. And the clay above it would create a dome. And eventually, the dome would collapse. So all the sand and gravel went through first. It would go back the pipe each direction. Gravel and sand move rapidly with water, and then the dome would collapse. And when we look in the hole, that's all we'd see is clay and possibly some construction debris. That doesn't say it was installed improperly. We, as commissioners, represent all county taxpayers and are required to follow the law. The county prosecutor advised us and the petitioner that the county is not permitted to spend public funds, resident tax dollars, on private property. To do so would be a violation of the law. Mr. Merchant, in the transcript, page 45, lines 5 and 9, said it best. "But to say that you'll assess everyone outside the watershed with the cost is not reasonable." What's to say? Why shouldn't we assess everyone in Claremont County for the cost, because they benefit just like everybody else? In 2004 and 2007, while I was a Miami Township trustee, the county studied the possibility of forming a watershed utility, stormwater utility, to develop funding streams to address these types of problems, and to develop a plan of maintenance and emergency repair. The cost of the study was $160,000, plus the investment of thousands of hours of staff and volunteer time. The stormwater utility was proposed at $3.81 per month for a residential property. The stormwater utility was not adopted for Claremont County. The idea received sharp, I repeat, sharp opposition in public hearings on the subject. The stormwater utility was, the only stormwater lot, water utility, utility adopted in Claremont County were the city of Melford and the city of Loveland. Residents there pay $5.50 and $4.25 per month to support their stormwater utility respectively. Ours was going to be $3.81. There are many conditions outside the, the right-of-way throughout the county that are similar to this. We heard testimony early that one fellow stepped up, and I know many others have stepped up and, and repaired their own collapses. If we were permitted to make repairs, and we did so, the county wouldn't be able to provide other necessary services. We represent you as, as residents of the county. We do our best to do that properly. It is your money that we decide how to spend, not ours. There is no pot of county money, except that, that you give us through your tax dollars, through primarily sales tax for the county. Forty-two percent of, of the earn, the revenue for the county comes through sales tax. But we did nothing wrong, and I just want to set the record straight.
You have a question?
Yeah, it's just a point of clarification. I understand that there's a line item in the budget for stormwater sewage personnel salary, and it's about $100,000. What is being done with that money?
We have to address the EPA mandates about stormwater, which is about quality of the stormwater emissions from pipes, and we have a department to address that. So it's EPA mandated, it's a requirement of the county to meet that mandate and to provide documentation that we're monitoring that.
And those personnel are with Claremont County Sewage? Where are they?
Somebody needed to help me with that.
Steve?
Here is also the Department of Environmental Policy. The Office of Environmental Policy. Also under, under contract with Soil and Water Conservation District.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Also under contract with the Soil and Conservation District.
Soil and Water Conservation.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Humphers, are there no safety laws or safety regulations about something so dangerous as well that could be brought to play and a way to fund that repair?
No. The answer, the, the answer is no. It's on private property. It's a private property issue, unless we move forward with the ditch petition. There are others, as we've heard here, that, that have addressed the private property issue themselves, and here we have a ditch petition.
I've got a question for Mr. Monger. Someone had said earlier that this was not an isolated incident, but I think it is. I mean, we don't see these very often, do we? Can you comment on that? This is truly an exception more than the rule, I guess.
Yes, I mean, we've had, I guess. Yes, I mean, we've had, I guess, probably three situations since I've been engineer, starting back to '03, so it's not likely to come in daily or weekly.
I think part of that is they're addressed by the private property owner, and they never come to the Board of County Commissioners. I knew as a township trustee of two or three that were in Miami Township where the private property owner made the repair. There was one in a backyard that the underground pipe erupted and filled the guy's pool with sand and gravel right on Pleasant Road, so I don't think the county hears about them because this is the first ditch petition we've seen with regard to stormwater ever in our county's history.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Humphries, you said that, but then the other part of that is, don't you think that it's because of the magnitude of this issue? You don't hear about the $2,000 and $3,000 ones, but the magnitude of this is incredible. Nobody's pointing fingers here. We just want this taking Peter up.
I under, and I'm sorry to-
You're kind of about the not hearing about them because it doesn't happen.
I'm not saying it doesn't happen.
You're saying you don't hear about them, but you don't hear about them because, gee your golly, I mean, the magnitude of this is incredible. And what I wanted to say earlier, and you didn't permit me to, was that this is not, should not be on the back of two homeowners. This is clearly not of their doing.
And there are other remedies?
There are other remedies. However, your charge is to make a fair and equitable decision, knowing that this is not their issue. And that's what I would have said. Have you allowed me to come to the podium earlier?
I didn't realize you were denied the option to come to the podium.
You've said it now.
Well, I say part of it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
This is a question for the engineer. This is of the watershed in the 64th House of the Hoover Dam. Is that in your formal proposal to the board?
No, it's A, is an alternate, I mean, the, the-
I may have missed that. I didn't hear you say that, so I just wanted to-
No, that's odd. The form, it's all, I guess, it really started back in October with the presentation or the option to do the whole subdivision was option, was a option. Another option was to break it into subareas, and then as a result of that meeting, they asked to take the subarea one, which included sections five, six, and seven, and break that down to the firm. So it's, I don't have a fur, it's just, these are just presented all of the facts. Do you agree with that?
I'd like to comment on, I don't think you folks really have a full appreciation of the extent of damage here. That line, as Mr. Monger said, is about 220 feet of this long. The one where the sinkhole is, that's just one break. We had an independent company inspect that line, and there are multiple breaks in that line. So the whole thing needs to be replaced, as Mr. Monger says. Now, 200-foot line, very 11 feet deep, and you specialize equipment, our estimated cost is over $100,000. You expect a person on a retirement income to replace a line that's over $100,000? Do you really expect that to be done?
I think Mr. Monger said it was $43,000.
Well, that's his cost, but I had an estimate. It was $86,000, $8600, this is fixed the one hole. To replace the whole thing was over $100,000. Now, do you really expect the homeowners to absorb that cost? It ain't going to be done, guys. I tell you that. It ain't going to be done.
Why would anybody buy a house that has a storm-
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I brought my four kids here today. We homeschool, we're home all the time. We live around the corner. We're friends with the folks who have the sinkhole. I can't explain to you enough how discouraging it is to not have a system in place to be able to take care of this, and how, to me, it promotes private homeowners to filling the holes themselves when clearly this cannot be done. But how anybody in this room would really be willing to go home, and if they had a sinkhole on their property, would they call you first, or would they just fill it up with concrete? And so that, you know, I have to say that I know we're talking about a ditch petition, but the bigger picture is, is what kind of a community do we want to live in? What do we want to promote? Do we want a hole that's 17 feet deep that for the past year and a half, might even be five and a half now, but even my 11-year-old here could not climb out of that hole if she wanted to? And there are other lines down there. So I have to tell you, I know that this is due process. We're trying to find a solution here, but the time that it takes, there's been an awful lot of risk, and the precedent that's being set by the laws that we have in place is pretty pitiful. I think that there are other solutions, but we need to find a good and equitable one and expedite this process.
So we're trying to do?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
If it's okay, I'm going to just come up here because I like to look at everybody. I'm the other petitioner, along with Bob and Donna. I'm the other neighbor on this.
And what's your name?
I am Diane Welch at 5522 Scarlet Maple. And I guess I just want to make a few basic comments. When the hole started, we had no idea what we needed to do, so we went to Miami Township. And I'll try to make this quick. But after several attempts at going to the township meetings, I became very frustrated, and I point-blank asked the township people at the meeting, what would you do if you were me? And the comment was, I am the daughter of an attorney. I would hire an attorney. So I knew we couldn't afford to fix this hole. I know enough about laws and things that I didn't want to assume the responsibility of fixing this hole. So after many attempts to find an attorney that would take this case on, Mr. Man took the case on, and I have to tell all of you, I personally cannot afford him. My husband and I cannot afford him, okay? But that's what we were told was our option, to hire an attorney. I know nothing about a ditch petition. I've learned a lot, as well as everybody else, but I'm told this is the only way that we can get this fixed. A couple people said sue the builder. I don't have that kind of money to sue the builder. I don't. My other comment is, as at the viewing, where a lot of important people of substance that have power and positions came to the viewing, all those people came and nobody seemed to notice that the hole had outgrown the second orange fence. I had to beg to get the first orange fence up. I begged to get the second orange fence up. And at the viewing, all these people that came for the viewing, that's what it was supposed to be, nobody seemed to notice that we needed a third fence up. That's how large the hole has grown. So I'd like to ask anybody here that can make a phone call after we leave here today to have a new orange fence put up because the hole has outgrown it, if you could do that. My main concern is, one is the safety. I don't have any little children anymore, but there has been kids climbing on the fence. It's a deep hole, and thank God, up to this point, nobody's been hurt. I'm in health care. And, you know, it's a potential problem waiting for an accident. And I guess the last thing I just want to comment on is, we've done everything we're supposed to do, and it's been a year and seven months. And I know, you know, I know it's not going to get fixed tomorrow, but anything we can do to expedite this, you know, that's what I would like to see happen. I don't really want it to get any bigger. It's going to affect our driveway soon. The cost will get bigger. And, you know, I'm the original owner of this house. I picked this piece of property and paid lots of extra money to be down in the cul-de-sac, not knowing anything that I would assume the responsibility of a storm sewer pipe. I didn't know any of that. I still, I'm still, like, flabbergasted to think that somebody would expect me to pay for that. I mean, my husband and I, our house isn't paid for. Where would we get this money? I mean, we don't have it. I just would like to get it fixed, and I, you know, I'm not, I feel bad for all the people that think they're not affected, but, you know, I got a phone call this morning from somebody that said, you know, it's okay if your water's not flowing through it, but, you know, if we included everybody, that's five cups of coffee at Starbucks in a year. Thirty bucks a year? I mean, I voted yes for the school levees ever since my daughter graduated. I don't have any children in school, but I'm going to put more taxes into that. I pay for all kinds of things to help the community out. I'd like to get a little help, and I'd like to get it sooner rather than later and get the hole fixed and keep the neighborhood safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
To address that point, you know, they're willing to do anything. Actually, after the second petition, there was a, originally supposed to be a viewing on that, only the second, I believe it was, and we went down and visited with the Wex and the Walters, Steelman and myself, and we suggested a, what we considered a more rational and reasonable approach, which was basically follow the watershed. But rather than do that and try to follow the watershed and that precedence, they chose to incorporate the whole subdivision for some reason. Okay, so, I mean, this whole thing is affecting somebody else's fault either, okay? They chose to refile the petition and incorporate the whole county, even though they had a suggestion, so it's not likely to-
Per Claremont County's suggestion. Per Claremont County's suggestion.
Thank you. Let me ask a question of Mr. Man. I guess as you were looking for your clients at the legal options, one of which, I guess, would be to go after the builder, I think we may have answered this last time, but it's been brought up a couple times today to sue the builder. Can you comment on what you found there?
Well, I think it suggested the builder was dead. I don't know if that's true or not, if that-
The corporation, maybe.
Yeah, if the corporation doesn't exist for things that happened 10, 15, 20 years ago, it becomes extremely difficult.
So it's not as-
And maybe you win and you get a piece of paper that says you've won, and there's no way to collect, and you're still, like, the hole is not fixed.
Sure.
So the legal practicality of doing that simply is not feasible, and all likely it doesn't go anywhere.
I'd just ask that for the benefit of those that think that's an option.
Yes, thank you.
Are there other options?
We've explored other options before we came to the ditch petition. I'm not aware of any other options at this point, which is why we're here today.
Well, if we were negligent in our inspection, you could sue us for negligence. Is that true?
That I don't know because of the immunity rules, so that's a far more complicated question, Mr. Humphries. I'd have to look at all the sovereign immunity issues before I can say that for sure.
In the back, there is a-
Yeah.
I'll get you next, I'm sorry.
For Mr. Humphries, you said that Miami Township at one time has proposed to do this $3.81.
I know, I'm sorry. Claremont County, Claremont County, well, while I was a township trustee in Miami Township, Claremont County considered a stormwater utility, which would have been $3 and something, yes.
And it was opposed because people don't want their taxes increased?
It was opposed. Many people, as many people have said here, I don't have any ditches, I don't have any pipes. I in Claremont County don't want to pay for the pipes that are in somebody else's yard. And that was, that rang the rafters about particularly the folks in the rural part of the county not wanting to support the more urban part of the county. And even in the urban part, those that have ditches in their front yard versus buried pipes, didn't want to be a part of supporting the buried pipes.
So the county has done what they can do in their power, which is what you're talking about, has proposed something to alleviate this, to create a budget, to build a budget for when these types of stuff happens, and it was turned down by the population?
It was, it never got to a vote of the population. The rafters rang so loud, it never-
Well, we've got whole townships that don't have storm sewers, so I know, I live in Ohio Township. I'm not sure I want to subsidize Miami Township as a person or citizen of the county.
And the challenge, you know, I just, we bought a property six months ago in Norwood that sidewalks are destroyed. You know, it's $15,000 repair of sidewalks. We don't even use the sidewalks, but they're public right-of-way. They're used the driveway from the same thing. We can't go back on Norwood, Tom Williams and I, we've talked. It's not, it's not a city problem. It's an owner problem. We have to absorb $15,000 to have the sidewalk tore up and redone. If we don't, or if somebody gets hurt, we could sue, or they adjudicate our company if we do not repair that stuff. It absolutely sucks to have high-dollar-priced stuff happening to your property, but you're not going to get the township to pay for it, you're not going to get the county to pay for it. I fought this about sidewalks, and unfortunately, there just aren't budgets created to, for them. They only have so much money to work with. There's just not, they don't print money to the county. So unfortunately, in this situation, it does fall on the owner, just like, you know, we're out of budget, we put a roof and a boiler in this building, and we're out of budget, but we have to come up with money, $15,000 to decelerate, and it's on us, and there's nothing we can do about it. Fortunately, you can at least create a ditch petition for this, since we don't have that option. So there's just hard things that happen when you buy properties that are awful, but it's just, unfortunately, the cost of owning a property.
Yes, sir. All right. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. We have kids that are, that go to private school, and she has fixed that homeschool, and yet we still have to pay property taxes, and we still have to cover the public schools' costs. So there's all kinds of things that we pay for that, yeah, these people may not have a ditch on their property, but still they're part of the community. That's the whole point. Also, the laws are in place to represent what is reasonable, and it is not reasonable to expect one homeowner to say, I will gladly take over the cost of maintaining a 200-foot pipe on my property for all the rest of the people in our neighborhood. That's not reasonable. It shouldn't even be a law because the law is based on the reasonable man, and that is not reasonable to expect the homeowner to buy a home, didn't sign a contract, didn't say, I will take this pipe on and I will maintain it and pay for it. No one ever told him what he had to do with it. No one ever asked him to sign the contract. The county, however, was asked to approve that pipe, whatever means. If you relied on someone else's report or someone else's research, that was your choice because it was your responsibility to make sure that the pipe was installed correctly. And I know that you mentioned that looking down in the hole, you can't tell if it's been properly installed. I don't know how you could say that one way or the other, but I know you could dig down right next to the hole and see whether it's been installed properly or not. It'd be very easy to prove it by digging down. Obviously, if it had been installed properly, it wouldn't be broken after only 15 years of use. It's meant to last 50 or 100 years, like someone else said over there. Also, we are a neighborhood. We're called Orchard Valley, and that is our neighborhood. Tony, you maintain the sign for our neighborhood, and you ask everyone to donate to maintain that sign, everyone in the neighborhood, even though it's not in my section. But you put our five bucks in your mailbox, and I know Tom Williams is in your mailbox. He's asking for 30 bucks a year. It's an insurance policy, and it's a tax write-off, real estate taxes. It's not like HOA where you pay a hundred or 200 bucks a year, you don't even get to write off any of your taxes. Everyone in our neighborhood voted to not have an HOA. Everyone has a neighborhood. That's why we don't have one now. We started with one. So we're a neighborhood. We're a subdivision, and we all-
That was not voted. I foreclosed this neighborhood. I foreclosed this neighborhood in the neighborhood. It was not voted.
Any other comments?
We need comments regarding the ditch petition.
Back again, Tom Sherman, 1681 Hickory Fifth Drive. The lady keeps saying it's wrong to have one person pay for this. Well, with the engineer's new drawing of the way the land lays, we're not talking about one person, we're talking about 64, 66, whatever it is. So we've got to get away from the one person. They're not absorbing it, even if we get excluded because it doesn't benefit any of us in section three. it, even if we get excluded, because it doesn't benefit any of us in section three or two or one. But get away from the one person having to pay for it, because it's not just one person. And if you want to absorb the costs for that section, I don't have a problem with it. I'm not gonna come up and ask you to help me with my sword bite in section three, if and when it ever goes. I don't think it's haunted. The pipe, the pipe that was put in down there has a fifty-year guarantee, and it blew out in, what, twenty years? So I'm just telling you, it should have lasted longer, it's supposed to last longer. That's why I think section three is gonna last longer, because its concrete is put in right. But it's not just one person paying for it. It's everybody in four, five, and six.
I think one thing to refer to, that's one of the options, if the board totally denied the petition.
Correct.
Then it would be.
I understand.
So that's why the option is either that, accepting petition for everybody, or accepting modification of it.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, maybe your attorney should amend the petition.
Right.
Maybe we ask Mr. Ubel and Mr. Proud to do what Mr. Humphries done and kind of share what, so what are your thoughts at this point?
Do you want me to go first?
Again, I'm gonna keep my very short, simple. And again, y'all know what the options we have. And, you know, to me, if we totally deny it, that makes no sense, that's not helping the problem, addressing the problem whatsoever. Personally, you know, for me, I think that looking at the watershed, and that those property owners that actually drain into by percentage is, I'm not saying it's the most perfect way, but it's the most fair and equitable. And again, it doesn't put the burden just on one or two property owners by doing this. And that's how I feel.
Firstly, I look at this as not Orchard Valley subdivision, this is a precedence we're setting for the future. Therefore, we have to take everything into consideration. It may happen in a year, in ten years, further out. So it, I feel it should be an expense that is shared, simply because the magnitude of it, the potential magnitude of it. The question is, to what degree? And I think that's why we're here discussing it. And I think everybody's input and comments, as I said last time, civil discussion that we're having on this little get-together has been helpful and appreciated, and I think it's useful. So, yes, sir. You had your hand up a couple times.
I just want to say I'm appreciative of the board's position and also the comments and the view. But I was wondering, given what we've all learned about all of this, would it be something that may happen in the future that the board would look into, to then draw maps of our county, which reflect directly watershed and drainage, and then seek to then instigate some petitions for those watersheds, and then, so that you would have a fund if something like this happens?
Well, I think it comes down to where your storm sewers are, and they only are located in a very small percentage of the county. So to draw these maps up, I think we have the maps, they're called topo maps, and we have creeks and streams and rivers to handle it on a normal basis. But in subdivisions, in some subdivisions, we have storm sewers. In those cases, that's kind of why we're here today.
Right. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, Mr. Humphries said that previously that they had tried to instigate a tax for disfored drainage over the whole county. And what we've learned, I think, shows us that the issues come up based on drainage. And so would it be beneficial, or would it be something the board would look into, to then map those drainage areas in subdivisions and make a requirement for new subdivisions that the drainage is outlined as part of those building processes and emphasized? And then, you know, maybe you could then revisit a very small patch for these, for these kind of situations. Because you probably won't find the builders wanting to change the way they're building these drains. The drains are where they have to be. The properties are what they are. They have to put the drains in where they go. So you're not going to get rid of this problem. That's, I guess, what I'm trying to say is, it seems like we have a problem, but it's a problem of foresight. And that's what's caused this.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
With the modification that may be considered for this petition.
Take it you live in the subdivision?
I do.
In your name?
My name is Brian Lynch, I'm at fifty-six sixteen Beach Grove, so I'm directly affected by the, one of the other damaged pipes, the twelve inch pipe on Beach Grove. The modification that would be considered, would it include that damaged pipe? Or would this be specific to the thirty-six inch pipe on maybe?
I think today we're just discussing the thirty-six inch pipe.
Right.
However, today's, or the decision we decide to go with, is going to probably establish a precedence which may apply to your twelve inch pipe.
Well, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, just a quick warning clarification. The original hearing, I guess, the first hearing in October, I presented several options. One option, or option to include the whole subdivision was an option, and then we had three other options, sub area one, sub area two, sub area three, and now we have what's called the fourth option. So the way I view this is, those are all those options available to the board. If you want to pick option one, you know, if you want to pick of those, say, of those three options from the alternate that I presented, sub area one, two, and three, if you wanted to pick one, two, or three of those, I mean, it's, those options, is the way I see it, are available. Marshall, maybe, maybe Humphries.
What do we call this last option you presented today?
Um.
With watershed, the watershed.
I would say it would be, just to try to keep some sort of, you know, consistency. It's complicated, but sub area one A, because the first proposal, if you remember, was the whole subdivision. And then, when we looked at the problem areas, there was, there was a problem in section five, which dealt with five, six, and seven. So I believe, I can't remember that, the presentation from October, but I believe that was what we called sub area one. And then I know we had a sub area two and a sub area three. So really, what this is today is a refinement of sub area one.
Which contains sixty-six lots.
Which is, went from sixty-six down to sixty-four. It's a refinement of sub area one. So if you want to call it, you know, area one A or something like that, but I think it's important to keep it attached to.
Touch the screen for me, would you? There you go.
Yeah.
So, does that area affect, that area is all the water that goes through this pipe? That's the sub drainage area of all the water, the source of all the water that goes through that pipe?
Right. Which if you kind of relate this area, the closest, you know, relative to this area is sub area one. So it's a refinement of sub area one. So we've got, we've got the whole subdivision as an option. We've got sub area one as presented in October, sub area one as presented today, sub area two as presented in October, and sub area three as presented in October.
So you're calling this one A?
I would call it one A, yeah.
Yeah, we might make it longer. Sub, sub area one A affected watershed consisting of twenty-five point six acres, that pretty much.
Yeah, nails it down.
It's sixty-four lots.
Sixty-four lots, yeah.
You can sell this as an engineer.
No, not.
Exactly.
Commissioner, you will be back in a second. Again, that's, that's a decision, and I think we are, you know, making a decision today.
We can or we can't?
I think it would make sense for us to make it today. And just for the very fact of, you know, hey, this been going on, let's get it over with. And just make a decision today and boom. Hopefully then, you know, there's things you could be done, you know, before winter even. So that's why we're hoping to do that. And we definitely will make the call too about the third fence as well.
Point of clarification, isn't there still have to be a final hearing where the engineer actually reports to the commissioners on what the actual cost will be based on bids he receives? And then each homeowner should be receiving another certified letter that outlines.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, but that's based upon what decision we make, it's based on what he.
I just want to make sure it was clear that it's not going to be pulled out tomorrow.
Not tomorrow, right.
Will the letters be sent to only the affected homeowners?
Wait, I don't know that that's a pro, I don't, I need Marshall to help me with the process.
That's the process. If the board should vote in favor of petition as filed or a modification of the petition today, if they do either of those, then the next thing that happens according to grant a petition, which is sixty-one thirty-one twelve, is the board shall adjourn the hearing on the improvement to the date that it has fixed for the filing of the reports, plans, and schedules by the engineer, and adjourn the proceedings from time to time if necessary thereafter. So what we've heard from Mr. Munger is, he needs to do his own estimate of what the cost will be if the engineer's office undertakes the project, assuming that, you know, the petition is either granted as filed or as amended, or if you will, as modified, probably a better way to say it. He's going to need to tell the board today if they do that, how long it's going to take to get those figures. Because then, we have to pick another date, giving him enough time to do that, to come back together with the affected property owners having certainly notification to be here. And he will then have a good figure for you. I mean, we have a good preliminary estimate, but what has to go into this is, is there going to be a bond, is there going to be a interest on the bond, what's the exact figure going to be, or as close as we can get to that exact figure that each property owner would have to pay. So that's the next step, okay? There has to be another hearing with no longer preliminary figures, but good figures.
But if we make that determination, we can't reverse it and, we go forward with the petition regardless of what the cost comes back, we're based on the estimates today, and we're there. Is that, that's my understanding, or not?
My reading of the petition is, it could be, it could go down again.
On another hearing?
That's correct.
Specifically, if the costs were actually outweighing the benefit, you would have to deny it.
That's correct.
Absolutely, yes.
From the man who knows more than he ever wanted to know about.
All of us here, I think, agree.
This is a point that, it's a plea, I guess, on behalf of the post office, okay? Because the last time we got these letters sent out, there were like, there were two hundred of them that went out all at the same time.
Yes.
And to be honest, the post office didn't do what you paid them to do. They were supposed to come knock on your door, okay, and get you to sign the letter, okay? They didn't do that. Instead, because I was sitting there looking out the window, and I watched them just stick a paper in there, saying, come to the post office and get. Now, I talked to the postmaster, no secret about it. Basically, what they were saying was, if it's possible or legal, I'm not going to believe that.
It has to be by certified mail return receipt.
But could it be done in batches? You know, send fifty a day for four days.
The problem is, when we get into the timetables under the statute, we can't necessarily accommodate that. And I know, because believe me, the staff for this, for the BCC just goes through all kinds of hoops to make sure this gets done. We will do the best we can. Unfortunately, we can't control the US post office.
I understand. I just wanted to let you know that that situation occurred.
And if you did, what would you have between the bushes?
Just want to, I guess, I want to reiterate in terms of the petition, how big guys choose to go with it. There's one additional section right there with Beach Grove that is affected by the pipe, maybe not nearly had as many lots or whatever. I know I'm gonna have to take it for this one or the other. I would like, if you could consider the Beach Grove section in whatever you guys decide. Thank you.
I didn't get your name and address earlier, I'm sorry.
Brian Lynch, I'm fifty-six sixteen Beach Grove Drive.
Thank you.
I am a property that is included with the twelve inch pipe, the second, the second sub area two.
Section four.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, the engineer, you're correct, I think there are sections four, five, six, and seven.
Okay, good.
Sub areas two and one.
Okay, well, and based on the evidence presented, I guess the question is, how would the commissioners like to proceed? We've got four options, one to dismiss it, one to grant the petition, one to grant an alternate petition or proposal, or to continue this continuance. So.
I'd rather address it now. Do we have to, is this a regular session?
You are in regular session right now. You just happened to be in the public hearing.
Okay.
Here, regular session. Mr. Humphries?
Your decision.
I would tend to concur with Mr. Proud. I think we have all the facts and testimony. Everyone's been given a chance to speak twice now, and I'm not sure if another meeting is going to bring to light too much more new information on it, and maybe a refinement.
It's kicking the cane down the road.
But if that's the case, if we want to resolve it now, would we then entertain a motion? Ms. Casique?
I defer to Assistant Prosecutor Marshall McCracken.
We can make a, we can make a motion to.
You may make a motion right now.
Well, that I would move that we would approve the supplement that the county engineer presented to us today, known as sub area one A, dealing with, I believe, it's sixty-four lots. That would be assessed as is presented.
So he's amending the petition?
He is amending the petition.
As amended, yeah.
To go with the proposal made by the county engineer Pat Munger, known as area sub one A.
I'm not sure the benefits outweigh the cost for many of the persons in that area, so I'm gonna probably not vote yes.
I will second motion.
So the motion is to approve the supplement that was submitted by county engineer Pat Munger, designated as sub area one A encompassing sixty-four lots, as presented, and to amend the petition that was submitted.
Should we reflect that?
Is that correct?
Yes.
And do we need, I walked in while you were speaking earlier, Marshall, but you commented on the refinement of the value of the costs and things, is this?
You don't need that to go in here, but we need to select a date for that.
Okay.
With the benefit of Mr. Munger telling us how long it's going to take for him to have those figures.
We've got, we've got a motion though in a second on the floor. We need to do a roll call on that.
Mr. Proud?
Yay.
Mr. Ubel?
Yes.
Mr. Humphries?
No.
Get that.
I would just need two weeks to get final estimates prepared. So anytime, as long as I have two weeks, it'd be time for me to get the final numbers together.
What I did.
You've got notice requirements.
Yes, you do, and I don't think that would.
What are they? How many, what's, what is a notice? Minimum and maximum?
Schedule of Assessments and Damages. The county engineer shall estimate benefits occurring to the public. The engineer shall determine the estimated cost, get down here in a minute, include the schedule of assessments, and the name and address of each private owner of land, and a description of land believed to be benefited by the proposed improvement, which names and descriptions shall be taken from the text duplicates. Get to your notice thing here in a minute. Yes, we are.
I think it's thirty days.
What is our requirement?
Am I gonna find thirty days in here somewhere? Ah, here we go. Notice of the filing of the schedule of assessments and damages. Upon the filing with the clerk of the board, the county commissioners, the reports, plans, and schedules by the engineer as provided under 6131, the board shall fix a date not fewer than 25 nor more than 90 days. You don't have to fix it today. If you want Mr. Monger to present these figures to you in two weeks' time, you can fix the date in two weeks, 25, but not more than 90 days after two weeks from today, if you would like to do that.
Sooner the better.
We have to have his figures before you fix the date according to 613116.
For the final hearing.
You knew that, right?
So we have to have the comments before we can fix the date. I think that's what.
Yes.
What it says is, upon the filing with the clerk of the board, county commissioners, the papers, reports, plans, and schedules by the county engineer as provided in 613114, the board shall fix a date not fewer than 25 nor more than 90 days.
After he's filed.
Subsequent to the filing.
And that's when we give the notice to.
So in two weeks, you can have it to us?
I'll, I'll clarify on it, not with final estimates, final cost. Present that to the board and then within two weeks, I'll do that and then at that one time.
You'll be able to, you'll be able to establish the date.
And it'll need to be broken down the way you had it in the back of your supplemental report because we have to advise each of the 64 property owners of the exact amount they're going to be assessed.
So really, I have all of our, everything that I need to know, say, was, you know, what direction we're going. Now I know the direction we're going, getting, getting that information put together. Certainly within two weeks, we'll have that back to the board. We have all of the 64 owners' names and all that. So once we determine the final cost, it's just a matter of changing the spreadsheet and all the values will be calculated. So we'll have all the needed and necessary documentation in two weeks.
Good.
Thank you all for attending today.
Yes, thank you very much.